And I think some of our working group members are still arriving. I'm not sure if anybody else is experiencing connectivity issues, but I admitted Meg Allison, and it's acting like it's just spinning and spinning and spinning. Did she actually get into the meeting?
I am not seeing her. I think it could be one of the ones that, one of the teams tricks where you keep saying yes, and they won't actually let them in.
She's waiting in the lobby, and I can't get her in. So Josh, can you help with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I want to do roll call to see who's here. I'll just call out people's names. I actually had thought Meg was not coming today, so it's a little confusing. Maria Avery.
I am here.
Wonderful. And Jeanette Bear.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Jeanette may need to leave us after a little bit this morning, but Jeanette, thank you so much for prioritizing coming here. And when you need to go, you need to go. So
Thank you.
Maybe just pop it in the chat at the point that you're leaving so that we know you've gone. I'm here. Is Denise Hersey here yet?
She I don't think will be attending. She is in Spain right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then I think I saw Christopher's face this morning.
I am here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Andy Kolovos? Is Andy with us yet? Kelly McCag?
I have not seen Kelly yet.
Karen McCullough?
I don't think so.
I've heard Susan's voice. Susan O'Connell?
I am here.
Great. And Wendy Sharkey?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful. We also have some folks from the department here this morning. Tom McMurdo? Maybe I'll just read out who's here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Tom. Jeanette Schaefer?
Good morning.
Good morning. Josh Muse, we've heard you.
Good morning.
April Shaw?
Hello.
Lauren Kelly, who has graciously taken on the minutes role for today.
Good morning.
Joy Warland?
Good morning.
Tanya Riles?
Hello.
Did I skip? I'm looking at my list. Karen, did I say Karen already?
No, but I'm here. Good morning.
Great. I checked you in before I heard your voice. So that was trying to stay in the, in the present moment. Thank you all for being here. Is there anyone here that I didn't call out in the roll call? Okay, so this morning we have, we have a pretty packed agenda, so I'm going to just move quickly to public comments. Hearing no public comment, I'm going to move along to approval of the minutes with a possible action to approve the minutes of the working group meeting on September 23, 2022. These minutes, I believe, were prepared by Lauren. And I would like to now ask if anybody has any motions related to the minutes that they'd like to make?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay. Is anybody second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. So now, just a quick check in. Are there any corrections or edits that anybody recommends before we take a vote? Hearing none, I want to just thank Lauren for her awesome job with the minutes, and we'll call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the minutes as prepared? Please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Please say nay. Right, so they are approved. I actually just realized something, though. Hold on. One, two, three, four. We have 11 members. We have four absent, so we have enough people to actually do things like approve minutes. I just wanted to do a quick math check. So, great, thank you. So the minutes are approved, and we will post the approved minutes on the working group's webpage. I would ask, I've realized that we're doing things behind the scenes in the Department of Libraries to get minutes to the places that they need to be online within the appropriate timeframe, which is five calendar days. And that's actually a little hard with a Friday meeting to, to get them up in time because we lose two days to the weekend each week. But I'm not sure if everybody is sharing the minutes out to groups that you represent. So it would be really helpful if, if you're here as a representative of the Vermont Library Association or the School Library Association, or the academic group, if you can share the minutes with the governing body of those groups and make sure that people see them and know that they're out. People keep coming to me, which is, it's okay as far as like me giving an update now and again, but I think the intention of having positional members of this group was that the positional members could do some sharing back to their own groups. So I just wanted to encourage people to do that. So for example, today's meeting, Susan, you know, you could let the Public Library Association, the, the VLA Public Library Group, know that the minutes are up. That just might help to kind of get our work on the radar of more community members. Does that sound kind of reasonable? I hope. Wendy, I love that you're
Would it be useful for one of us just to post on one of the listservs that they're up and available, and here's where you can find them?
You know, Susan, that's a great idea, too. I'm not sure if all the academic folks are on the academic or on our regular listserv, so I want to be sure that like we get it to each of the, the key groups. But I think that would be really, that would be fine. That would be a great idea because that's sort of like, we asked for your testimony, and here's the video of the meeting. It's posted, and here's the, here's the, here are the minutes.
That would be marvelous, Susan. Thank you.
Happy to do that for the, where public librarians end up going, lib staff and the Vermont libraries.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, well, it is now, it's 9:12, so we're actually, we caught up somehow. So maybe, I'm just trying to see who's here and who they represent. And before we move to the next topic, because it, just while we're thinking about the, the minutes, Maria, do you think that you could post minutes? Is there, is there an email group for academic librarians? And could you share the minutes with that group?
Absolutely. There are quite a few of various capacities for very, of course, for various different subsets of academic librarians. So I'll work with Denise and my dean, maybe, to figure out which ones are, are the most appropriate to get the word out to the largest group of people.
That's wonderful. Thank you. And I see Meg Allison is here and has, I hand that, Meg, you finally got in.
I finally got in. Thanks for your, your patience. Fiber Optics will come to Moretown eventually. I just want to offer that I will share with the Vermont School Librarian Association listserv all the minutes.
Thank you so much.
Including today's.
Great. Okay, that would be really helpful. I think that that'll help folks to sort of know what we're up to, and maybe nobody will read the minutes, but they'll at least have seen an email and know that we're meeting and communicating, and that there's a way to, to see them if, if if they have the bandwidth to do so. Okay. Well, I want to move on to the next topic of our agenda, which is a topic overview on continuing education for library staff and trustees. And the two members of the Department of Libraries team who are here to share with us on these topics are Joy Warland, our Continuing Education Consultant at the Department of Libraries, and Tanya Riles, the Governance Consultant at the Department of Libraries. I know that both Joy and Tanya have PowerPoints to share, and so Joy and Tanya, you can, I think Joy's going first, and you could just do a shared screen, and we'll all see the PowerPoint. All of the materials are up on our working group website. I've just put the, the URL in the chat thread. If somebody wants to look at it on their own screen, there are links to the, the report on continuing education, which is next on the agenda. And then after that, with Tanya's presentation, will be the trustees' education and training. And then I see that we also have a guest with us. We have Deb here from Deborah Eller Hansen, who's going to be doing the, the fifth agenda topic after Joy and Tanya. So welcome, Deb.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna, oh, here's, Kelly is with us now, too. Second grader swarming her library, which is, brings joy to my heart. So we're gonna hand it over now to Joy Warland and Tanya Riles. And if everybody who's not presenting could mute their mic, that would be great. And you can feel free to turn off your camera during the
Okay, do you see my slide? Hopefully?
We do, yeah.
Great. Okay. Good morning, everybody. This is Joy Warland, and as Kathy said, I am the consultant for continuing education in small and rural libraries at the Department of Libraries. Thank you, Kathy, and the working group for this opportunity. This is a topic that's near and dear to my heart, so very important to me. So I'm just going to talk about the CE that the department offers, especially about the certificate program, the Certificate of Public Librarianship program, and then just some other CE that's available from other providers that Vermont Libraries often take advantage of. So the certificate program is pretty much the core of the department's offerings for CE. It started over 25 years ago, and it was originally designed for people running the small library who had not had professional library training, so probably did not have a master's degree or anything similar to that. And that's still the case, that a lot of the library staff have not had professional library training. They may have had other advanced degrees or other sorts of community experience and nonprofit experience that they bring, but they don't necessarily have library training. So this is designed to give them that sort of core basis of library topics that they might not have had from just being a library patron or working in another field. So there is no graduate library program in the state, so that's one of the reasons this is really important. And then also, the 1986 standards actually say that the librarian should possess a library science degree or the Vermont Certificate of Librarianship, or be working towards it. So it's pretty important and a needed resource for library staff here. So I've been at the library department for four and a half years now. It came in 2018. And at that point, there was a real rebirth in the certificate program. It had sort of slowed down a little bit for various reasons in the previous years. So when Jason Broughton came on as Assistant State Librarian and then hired me, we really jump-started it again with a really increased participation, increased enrollment. We started offering more things online. So it's just continued to grow throughout the years that I've been here. Just four people, in fact, this week signed up for the program. So what we're seeing with that is increased completion numbers, partly because of the online offerings. It's easier to fulfill the requirements within a shorter amount of time. And then just, we're promoting it like a lot, you know, just pretty much constantly. And word of mouth, we're getting more people that aren't just library directors, but directors are suggesting that their staff take it. And then just by word of mouth, other people are taking it. We have a few trustees in the program and a few aspiring librarians, people who hope to work in public libraries in Vermont at some point. It's only people within the state, but at this point, since we're offering things online, we're able to open up to more people. And a really, really big change that has happened is, as I already said, the increase in online training. Of course, we had to do that because of COVID, but we're already starting to do it to some degree even before that. And at that, that point, like when I came on in 2018, we did a survey of CE needs, got a pretty good response on that, and it was really mixed about online versus in-person training. There was still some technology reluctance in some people, and there was also, you know, the desire to meet together in person, which of course still exists, but we're just not really hearing that, that much anymore. People respond really positively to the accessibility of the online training. We're able to do more in-depth training on the core courses because we're not limiting it to when people can travel to Barry to attend in person, so we can have more contact hours, give them homework in between, and meet over a course of several weeks, which we weren't doing before. And it also allows us to have more guest presenters because guest presenters are less expensive if they're presenting virtually, if there's a fee involved. And also, we are doing more things like just a one-hour presentation on specific topics that we probably wouldn't have asked people to travel to an in-person session of something like that. So it's overall, that's been really, really positive, and it's really helping people complete their certification quicker. So just about the requirements of the certificate program, so it's broken down into four core courses, which are pretty much the core elements of librarianship, professional librarianship. So collection development, information services slash reference, cataloging, and public library administration. So those are the four core courses. They each earn 25 continuing education units. And then they have 40 electives and 10 library technology CEUs they have to complete. So the electives and library technology, we don't tell them specifically what to take. They just need to earn that number of credits, which they can do either by one contact hour equalling one credit, or sometimes doing longer form things that earn multiple credits. So we do give them a lot of advice about what things to take for those. We hope that they do sort of a broad, general mix of things in the electives. And then we also give a lot of information about where they can find those content for, to earn those credits in addition to things that we offer. So the enrollment is rolling, so it goes throughout the year. And I always do an open house at the beginning of the fall and January. Just did one this fall, and 14 people have enrolled since that happened. So after they've enrolled, they can, anything they do can start earning credit. There's a required orientation. It's online on Niche Academy. And then, just this fall, I've started requiring a meeting one-on-one just so that the person, new person and I can talk about the requirements, make sure they are clear on what they are, and just help them sort of get it started. And another new thing this fall is a mentor program for people in the certificate program. Again, to help them sort of navigate not just the certificate program, but how to use it the best way to hopefully help them do their job better, maybe get a new job, you know, go up, rise up to a director position if they're not already in one. And also, just to get a fuller understanding of Vermont Librarianship because it's different than it is other places. It's different probably than some of the other jobs they've had. There is a lot of turnover in our library staff, so I'm, part of the hope is that if they're utilizing the mentor program and the certificate program in a sort of more robust way, that we might have more sustainability in our workforce. So we have 15 mentor pairs, and then two mentors that have agreed to just be sort of on-call for people, but they have a specific areas expertise that they are willing to help people out with as needed. So it's just started, but I'm really hopeful that it will be a positive thing. So some of the things that they take for electives are administrative topics, HR things, budget, library programming, EDIA issues, strategic planning, grant writing. And then we also allow them under, with approval, to do independent projects. So we haven't had very many people do this, but the ones that have done it, it's gone really, really well. They create a project that they want to do and work on it with me, and we figure out like learning outcomes. And then they are usually mentored on that by somebody at their library. So people have done cataloging projects. One person did professional reading and then reported on that. And so that's happened a few times. And as far as technology, that, that tends to be the hardest one for them to meet the credits. But they can do ILL trainings or ILS trainings, Overdrive Palace, that kind of thing, social media, using Microsoft Office. So, and again, anything like related to technology that they might be using eventually at their library or already. So providers are, again, the Department of Libraries does a lot of things. ALA offers things. The Network of National Libraries of Medicine, which those are all free, bookless ones are free. We give credit for attending conferences. Some people have taken community college classes. And then also, some people have done things that are not necessarily library training specifically, but more like either EDIA issues or community engagement kind of things that will apply to their library work. So just a couple of examples of that, which I think are really cool ones. One person has done the, she's done training with her community about the Abenaki members of their community and how to reach out to them and make meaningful connections with them. So that's been really helpful, I think, for her in her library work. And then another person has just joined the Vermont Changemakers Table, which is a cohort of Vermonters under 35 committed to strengthening their communities. It's a Vermont Community Foundation and Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility Collaboration. So it's exciting to see those kind of other types of trainings trickle into the library world. So just a few statistics. We have over 120 active participants. We also have several that are, people tend to start the program and be really enthusiastic, and then things happen. Sometimes they just go on to another job. So we have people that are still engaged, but when I say active, these are people that are regularly taking classes, regularly reporting on their progress. So, as I said before, 70-plus new enrollments. And the certificate completion, just want to compare these numbers here. So '27 in 2020, and that was a big year because the shutdown, and people did a lot of CE during those months in between when the shutdown happened and when we gave people certificates in June. '27 in 2021, '20 this past year. And just to compare that, in 2013, there were 12 graduates. '24, there were seven graduates. So up a lot from those years. So some examples of, in other states, somewhat similar types of programs. Sorry, I just went to another slide. Here's where I mean, okay.
Joy, this is Kathy. I'm just going to jump in for one second because we have, for, for the topic, we have we have until 10, and we, we need Tanya to
I need to pick it up. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I think you have about five minutes left.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, okay. So these slides, you know, this information is on the slide, too, so I don't need to like talk about each one. So, but this is examples of somewhat similar programs in other states. Some of them, they're all free, but some of them are required, and some are not. Ours is obviously not required, so that's a difference. Other things that the C, the department offers, Niche Academy is a platform for archiving and creating content that's all library-specific. So we have our own content archived on there. We also have content from other providers, and it's all free access to anybody working associated with Vermont Libraries. It's divided into different academies for youths and trustees and library staff. And then we also do respond to community requests. An example of that that we're doing right now is there was a lot of talk about strategic planning going on in the listserv. We responded to that and hired a company to do a several-month training on strategic planning. And we are also paired that with asset-based community development training that we did for the Director's Summit. Similarly, knowing, anticipating the grant, grants for renovations that are coming up, we are giving training on ADA accessibility and renovations and fundraisings around that. So I did just include other topics. You can read through them and our, and our partners that we work with. A few more stats, just as specific to what we are doing in our department. In the last year, we did 63 workshops, 1,800 people attended. We also do informal meetups, providing space for peer-to-peer resource sharing and learning. Those are some of our partnerships. Just want to make sure. Oh, yeah, we also send people to conferences. Sample feedback, and I'll just summarize basically that a lot of positive things about the online training, a lot of positive things about being able to scale down like the training and ideas to small libraries because that's something that's difficult to do sometimes. Some requests for topics, we often get ones about de-escalation. We often get ones about working with boards. This is just about our communication to, about CE. We send things out in the digest regularly, and let's see. Oh, so some regional graduate library science programs, if you can just look at that briefly and look at the prices on those, and then think about those prices of those relative to the wages that Vermont librarians make. And that might be a reason why there aren't a lot of master's degrees in our state. So, you know, just thinking about that in terms of the needs. There's also some fee-based certificate programs, also not inexpensive and don't exactly fit, you know, what, the same kind of training that we do where we're trying to give somebody an overall training of being a library director. And then just some examples as well of associate and bachelor degree, library degrees programs, which are a little bit less expensive, but maybe not as applicable to our work either. So if you want to dig into those later, you can look at them. I did have a lot of information on them. But that's all for now, unless anyone has questions, or if there's time for questions.
Thank you, Joy. You know what we'll do is we'll hear from Tanya, and then we'll do questions from the working group for both of you.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And there's really great content in that presentation. So working group members, you had it in advance, but please really look at that carefully. Tanya, we're ready for you now.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that it was my time. So yes, thank you for inviting Joy and I to come and present today. My topic is on trustee education and training. My name is Tanya Riles. I am the consultant for governance and management with the Vermont Department of Libraries. My presentation will discuss the library trustee education and training provided by the department. We will talk about foundational reasons for why we provide these resources, including the need to support the role of trustees, LSTA goals, and the legal foundation of the department. We will then discuss resources that we provide and how they are received by the audience. And then we will also talk about information for library trustee training that is available through sources other than the department. A library board provides governance to their library and oversees the library's overall well-being. In order to provide this oversight, each individual trustee should be knowledgeable about legal requirements for their library. That includes Title 22, open meeting law, and public record law. They should also learn about the state's minimum standards. Ours are currently in force from 1986. They should also learn about their responsibilities as a trustee and what's expected of them. Some of those responsibilities include serving in officer positions, approving policies, overseeing the library's finances, assisting in fundraising efforts, acting as a supervisor for the library director, and promoting the library within the community. While the state of Vermont does not require certification for boards or for individual trustees, the state's minimum standards state that library boards represent the community and are responsible for policymaking. The standards for boards include responsibilities such as assessing community needs, developing responsive plans of service, and evaluating library performance. They must adopt and annually review written policies, including a statement of purpose, affirmation of principles of intellectual freedom, confidentiality of library records, and collection development guidelines. These policies should be filed with the department. Other responsibilities for boards from the standards include that the board should have a written job description for the librarian and evaluate the librarian's performance at least annually. They must meet with, they must meet at least every three months in meetings warned and open to the public in accordance with the Vermont Open Meeting Law. They must make an annual financial and statistical report to municipal authorities. They must make an annual financial and statistical report to municipal authorities and the public, which is included in the town, city, or village report. The standards also state that the board must include the director in all meetings with the exception of executive sessions, and they must have at least one member appointed by municipal authorities or one member publicly elected at a fully warned town, city, or village election. And those are just things that library trustees in general should know. The Vermont Library Services and Technology Act grants to states five-year plan for 2023 to 2027 includes three goals. These goals are focused on desired outcomes for Vermonters and the libraries that serve them. Goal one is strengthening libraries. This goal states that the department will support library staff members and libraries throughout the state by delivering relevant, high-quality and community-focused services that incorporate up-to-date technologies and are based on best practices in the field of librarianship. Project 1.1 focuses on staff and leadership development and training. This project provides professional development and leadership training to library directors, library staff, and library trustees. Project 1.2 focuses on professional consulting assistance and provides professional consulting to trustees. This consulting aims to make them aware of best professional practices, help them solve problems, and inform them of grant and staff development opportunities. Training and educational resources provided to trustees support these goals and consequently the established goal. I'm sorry, support these projects and consequently the established goal. Our next foundational item comes from Vermont Title 22. Title 22 is the state statute for libraries, history, and information technology. Chapter 13 includes information about the Department of Libraries. Within this chapter, Section 606 lists other duties and functions of the department. These include providing consultative services to other libraries in the state. Other duties and functions may also include conducting seminars, workshops, and other programs to increase the professional competence of librarians in the state. Library trustee training and educational resources support each of these as they aim to support the whole of the library through the library's governing body. To align ourselves with the LSTA goals and the state statute, the department provides consultation and training to library trustees in both live and recorded formats. Our website, which is linked at the bottom of this slide, includes all recorded resources. This includes a manual for trustees and recorded videos on a variety of topics that trustees are able to watch at any time. These videos range in runtime from four to 30 minutes. There are additional videos available to trustees through the trustee niche academy, which Joy mentioned earlier. It is linked on this slide, and in order to create an account to access it, trustees can click on that and just easily create an account. We make additional print resources available to trustees. These include the Law of Public Libraries publication, a board planning matrix, and various helpful articles. Since joining the department just a little less than nine months ago, I have worked to update some of the information that's available and focused on improving the accessibility of our resources. I've worked on a revision to the trustee's manual with more up-to-date information and with a focus on greater accessibility, particularly for those who may be reading online or using a screen reader. The release of this update is forthcoming. The addition of the videos has been very helpful in establishing a baseline of shared knowledge between trustees. By making our trustees, I'm sorry, by making our resources easily available, trustees have more opportunity to learn and receive the same information even if they're not at a group training altogether. The resources discussed here are available at no cost to the library, to the library or to the individual trustees. Print items and videos are available at the link at the bottom. We also provide live training and continuing education resources in a live format as well. This includes individualized trainings for specific library boards. Our asynchronous options complement our live options as we encourage boards to engage in the readily available resources, particularly the trustee manual and the short videos. This permits each training to go more in-depth without being overwhelming. We also provide consulting service with myself or another department staff member. During these consultations, we assist with providing trustees with information and resources that can assist them with their role. These can take place over the phone, through email, or during a scheduled meeting. We are often able to provide the trustees with online resources that assist in responding to their need. In past years, we also held trustee and friends conferences. I've not held one since starting here, but I'm working to revise that format. Thanks to the increase in virtual CE, we are also able to provide live virtual training that we encourage trustees to attend alongside their director. Notably, we recently held some of those sessions that Joy spoke about earlier on fiscal management and strategic planning with outside expert presenters, and trustees were invited to attend those. Providing an opportunity for the trustees to attend ensures that they have the same information as their fellow board members and their director. They are also then able to engage more fully with the larger library profession. Again, all resources discussed here are available at no cost to the library or to the individual trustee. Evaluations from previous training show that the trustees find training to be enriching. I've included some feedback on this slide, but in general, their feedback shows that they find the department's continuing education resources to be informative, well-organized, and concise. As a result of engaging with these resources, trustees feel more confident in their role. They also find that department staff members are supportive and helpful, which encourages them to reach out individually or to encourage their staff to contact the department for future assistance. There are places outside of the department, but within the state where trustees may go for resources and education. The Secretary of State's Office provides many helpful resources to trustees, such as guides on open meeting law and lawyer referrals. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns is a resource for municipal libraries. They provide members with training, publications, and reference materials, research, low-cost professional services, confidential legal guidance through their specialized member legal inquiry service, and answer general questions on municipal topics. The Vermont State Archives and Records Administration is currently working to create template record retention schedules for municipal libraries. The University of Vermont Extension Vermont Public Library's educational program provides Vermont Public Library directors, librarians, and trustees with financial, budgeting, and human resources tools, information, and consultation. The goal of the department, the goal of the program, which is in cooperation with the department, is to support and enhance the fiscal and human resource know-how of Vermont Public Libraries. There are other places outside of the department and outside of the state where trustees could seek resources and continuing education items. The first is United for Libraries, which is the trustee and friend division of the American Library Association. They host an annual conference. The registration for that can vary and travel may be required, although they have recently held their conferences virtually. They also offer webinars and a trustee academy. Webinars require an annual membership, which could cost $60 to $70 per year, that is for a single individual, as they no longer allow group registration. Some webinars may require an additional registration fee. The trustee academy is available to trustees in states whose state library is partnered with United. The academy carries a fee of $200 to $250 per person. Every library is another potential source for trustee training, although much of what it provides is not necessarily specific to trustees. They provide recorded and live trainings, webinars, and guides. Guides and some recorded webinars are free. Premium webinars require a donation, which could be as little as $1, although they recommend a donation of $25. Finally, Board Source is another potential option for library trustee continuing education, although it is not specific to library boards. It provides support to nonprofit boards through written resources, guides, and publications. They also have an on-demand certification program for nonprofit board education. Their membership fee is based on a sliding scale, which is based on revenue for the organization, and ranges from $500 to $3,250. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and thank you again for inviting us to come and speak.
Thank you, Tanya, and thank you, Joy. So we have some opportunity now for members of the working group to ask questions or clarification about information that Joy and Tanya presented. Please feel free to come on, to come on to the screen here, because otherwise it's just me, and the video looks really boring. We need more. We should all wear special hats at some point. Okay. Do we have any questions from working group members, or Tanya, or Joy, or comments? Christopher?
Hi, thank you so much. That was really, really interesting, and I learned a lot. So I greatly appreciate it. My big question is really about the economics for trustees and staff participating, and I'm wondering if there has been any thought or consideration, and I know the answer is likely, that there's just no resources, to providing dollar support or compensation for part-time library staff who are required to participate in professional development as part of their certification process, or for volunteer trustees that may be relatively low-income in their communities and maybe could use some support to participate in some of these activities.
I can jump in on that. The trainings themselves that we offer through the department are fairly extensive, and those are all free of charge for folks to attend. I do know that some staff of libraries participate in trainings on paid time, so I believe that some of the folks who are taking the trainings are attending and being compensated already. We don't have sufficient funding in the department to pay stipends for people while they take training, either staff or library staff or trustees.
That might be a good potential recommendation for increasing diversity among both library staff and trustees, is to be able to offer some kind of stipend to people for participating in professional development. And I know it's sort of a new concept, so I'm not surprised that it's not happening now, but we should perhaps consider that. I also wanted to say just thank you, Tanya, for working on updating the manual. That's totally shocking to me that it hadn't been updated since 1986, when the world is entirely different. And just a comment on that, I'm wondering if you might be considering including any information or resources about how to manage library or book challenges in this modern moment that we're living in. I know, you know, we've had issues even in Vermont with inappropriate challenges happening, and I'm wondering if you're including that in any of the training materials that you're developing.
So I do want to clarify one thing just really quickly. The standards are from 1986. The trustee manual was last updated in, I believe, 2014. So just to clarify the timeframe on that. In terms of providing training to trustees regarding materials challenges, there are some conversations that we're having.
Thank you.
Let's see, we've got Jeanette next, and then Kelly. Jeanette, can you unmute, please? Sorry.
Got the camera, forgot the mute. Just following up on that, I know that there can be some arguments between library staff and directors on whether continuing education should be paid time or not. And that's just a philosophical thing, and I think, you know, strong guidance to trustees on that, on how important it is for them that their staff receive training. And on the flip side, many of our libraries are one-person operations. And if they're full-time, normally the doors are open during the working hours, and so that means, you know, if you're participating on an online program, you're being, you're doing that at the front desk, being interrupted. Or if you're part-time, many of the libraries have a second part-time job, so their additional time isn't free time to them. That's also booked. So there's a lot of stresses at the front desks in public libraries about time and training. It's wonderful that many of them, or most of them, are online now because that cuts down on transit time. In the old days, the library literally had to be closed on a day that the librarian had to travel to Berlin or whatever for a full-day program. So just a few comments from the front lines. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm going to call on Joy because I think she may have a response to what was just raised.
Well, I was actually going to say what, similar to what Jeanette just said, that one of the things that we have done is we've really talked a lot to library staff and trustees about the importance of CE and about how important it is to give them paid time and if, you know, back when they were traveling, pay the mileage if necessary. And it has definitely gotten better because it's online. Now the travel isn't a factor and the mileage isn't a factor, but it varies so greatly from library to library, and we definitely see that the people who are supported and their trustees are more likely to attend CE. So we are working on it sort of as much as we can without actually having funding to pay people for it, just to sort of change the culture so that trustees and staff know that it's a good thing for that to be on their paid time. And then I just also wanted to briefly say, Christopher, that we have done staff training about intellectual freedom issues, and they're, you know, constantly looking at other ways to do that because it comes up, you know, all the time as requests for training in that we share a lot of policies, and VLA has some really strong tools to work with on that, that we share out a lot. So we haven't done as much with trustees, but definitely could do more of that and probably will.
Thanks, Joy. Kelly?
I had a couple of things to say. One, I think we're very fortunate to have such qualified staff working for the state that can offer such amazing continuing education and to be able to pivot so well during and after the pandemic to continue to offer us continuing education opportunities. And two, I would like to just put on the radar that possibly when the standards are looked at, that possibly we put in there a requirement for continuing education, a lot of professions do have a CE requirement, and, you know, it could be staggered depending on, you know, the size of the service population, taking into consideration what Jeanette said as far as, you know, the difficulty to actually attend when you're also working the desk or working a second job. But that might bring home to trustees and town management how important it actually is. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. It's really great to hear that recognition for the team here at the Department of Libraries, and I really appreciate that. I know that they're doing amazing work, but it's really nice when other folks recognize their skill and their ability. I'm taking some notes, in addition to the notes that Lauren's taking, I'm just making a couple notes because we've had a few possible recommendations of the working group already just in response to these first two presentations. So just, we'll have time to talk about things at the end later on, so if anybody forgets what they said, it's a good idea for you working group members to jot down your ideas too on paper, because I know we'll have a few hours before we have that group discussion later. Wendy Sharkey?
Yes. Getting the certification is great, but is there any thought of maintaining the certification, like a requirement to perform so many hours continuing education every year? A lot of other professions do that. You're expected to do that each and every year, and I think that would be a good idea as well.
Yeah, I feel that these are all great things to consider as recommendations of the working group, but then also, I anticipate a potential recommendation of the working group, I think a lot of us do, will be that there's work done on standards for library professionals and for library service, and these could also be specific things that the working group recommends be looked at carefully by a future group that's working on updating standards. Are there other questions for our presenter? Are there other questions for our presenters? No, there was a lot of content there. Oh, I'm gonna ask Joy, can you say what you just wrote in the chat so that it makes it on?
I just, um, so we don't have any requirement that about certification at all, but I do know that there are certain specific libraries that do require that from their staff, just library by library. So it's not consistent across the state, but some do.
Thanks for sharing that. Uh, Christopher, can you share the comment you put in the chat too? Because on the tape, the chat thread won't show, I don't think.
Sure. Oh, yep, I'm unmuted, right? Yeah, so I just wanted to do a shout out for the Friends and Trustees Conference. I went to that several times when I worked at the Vermont Community Foundation. And it, it always felt like a big family reunion for trustees from around the state. And I know trustees and friends groups really, really liked meeting each other and sharing ideas on how to support their local library. I, you know, the world is different now, and I don't know if conferences like that are possible anymore or can come back in that same way. But I know it was a valued resource at the time. So I just get that in the record.
Thank you, Christopher. Any other questions or comments? For Joy and Tanya? Okay, well, hearing none, I want to thank you both for the hard work that you did to prepare your presentations. When I don't get many questions, I always am very convinced that it's because I was so thorough in what I presented. So I, I think that in your case, I just want to articulate that that is how I feel about the work you've done to kind of give us a good overview, both of what we're doing here at the department, and then some of the aspects of the, the national landscape. So thank you both for the time and energy you put into that. It's really helpful and will inform our working group. So, great work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Now I want to introduce Deborah Eller Hansen. Good morning, Deborah. Can you? Your agenda item is next, giving us an overview of our UVM School Media Specialist Program. And I understand that you're the coordinator of that program and a lecturer at UVM. And so I just want to hand it over to you. Do you have the ability to share? Do you see a share button for your PowerPoint? Okay, great.
Yes, I see it. I will.
Thank you so much for, for coming to meet with us today. We really appreciate your time and the preparation that you put into the PowerPoint.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to present our information. We really appreciate that as well. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to.
Oh, just to share with you, and so everybody has a sense of the timing, we'll have the presentation, if you can keep to about 20 minutes, Deborah, and then we'll do about 10 minutes of Q and A at the end. So, uh, working group members, make note of your questions so we don't interrupt her flow and, and then be ready for Q and A at about 10:20. Okay?
Okay. Okay, it just prompted me something here. Do you, let's see. A second. Can you see my screen right now? I don't believe you can.
Not yet, no.
Open share tray.
It's also possible that I could pull up, I could pull up the presentation and share it, but Josh, maybe you can jump in and help?
Yeah, I'm, um, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Hi, Josh.
Hi there. Um, so yeah, when you get to the, it may, there may be some sort of permissions. Once you hit, if you hit share, share tray, hopefully it will give you an option to open a window that you have open. But particularly if you're on Mac, it might.
Yeah, it didn't. And I can't change the permissions on this computer.
Well, I'm, I'd be happy to share that, how, the PowerPoint, if that.
Yeah, that would be great. Please, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, just one sec.
I've got it up too. I could also share it.
I should be just about there.
Okay.
It, yeah, it's the latest version that's linked to your webpage on your website there.
Great.
Okay, thank you. All right. So thank you again for allowing us, allowing me to present on the behalf of UVM, the School Library Studies Sequence. Today I'm going to give you, first of all, a historical background, information about the program, why school librarians need higher ed, graduate training, and then the intersection of teaching and learning and librarianship. And then I'll talk about the statewide shortage of school librarians. And then the main goal of the UVM School Library Sequence. I'll give you an overview of the UVM program, extended learning opportunities, how the UVM Library Sequence supports the Agency of Education, education quality standards, and about the School Librarian Licensor and the Master of Education Program and the needs. Okay. So, yeah, thank you. So, um, the, one second. Okay, so the mission of, the mission of UVM College of Education and Social Services is to educate and prepare outstanding professionals in education, social work, and human services to engage in policy-relevant scholarship of highest quality, et cetera. And the values are respect, integrity, innovation, openness, justice, and responsibility. Okay. So I'll start with the, a brief historical background. Next slide. The UVM Library Science Program is embedded within the Department of Education. It started out that way in 1978. Professor Helena Lang, Lang, I mean Lang, started the program then. And then in 2001, coordinator and lecturer, well Judy, Judith Kaplan started out as the lecturer and then eventually became the coordinator of the program, which flourished and transformed learning in school libraries for pre-K through 12 students in Vermont for almost two decades. And she retired at the end of July and I took over the beginning of August as coordinator of the program. Go to the next slide. So, um, why school librarians need higher ed? Why do they need graduate education? Well, it's because we work both with students and teachers, and this is according to the American Association of School Librarians, to facilitate access to information in a wide variety of formats, instructing students and teachers how to acquire, evaluate, and use information and the technology needed in this process, and introduce children and young adults to literature and other resources to broaden their horizons. As a collaborator, change agent, agent and leader, the school librarian develops, promotes, and implements a program that will help prepare students to be effective users of ideas and information alike.
It's Josh.
Pardon?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, no problem. Let's see, we're educational leaders as well as information and resource specialists who collaborate with other educators to provide equitable and inclusive access to resources and information for all learners. The educational training for this profession requires knowledge, skills, and understanding about the intersection of teaching and learning and principles of librarianship that impact successful school library programs. Next slide, please. So I just talked about, there is an intersection of teaching and learning and librarianship. So, school libraries, we, we are teachers. Not only are, are we the librarian, we need to know all the aspects about librarianship and practice those. We are also educators, we are licensed educators. And as such, we need to understand all educational learning theories, et cetera. So, of course, school libraries provide inclusive resources for our students. And then the next slide, please. And as well, we teach, one of our primary areas of teaching are inquiry, critical thinking skills. So we teach students essentially how to learn. We go through the inquiry, learning process, and we teach them all the skills associated with each stage of those, of that learning process. Next slide, please. So again, here are, here's an example of all the different information literacy skills that we teach students how to formulate good questions, searching for primary and secondary sources of information, how to cite properly, copyright, database instruction, digital curation, evaluation of sources, et cetera. Next slide, please. And then, of course, we are the librarian. We provide all the, the resources that specifically support the curriculum in our schools. So we need to understand, we need to map the curriculum. We need to understand that thoroughly, the needs. We need to understand our community. What are the interests of our students? What, what are our teachers teaching? So we support the digital resources, so eBooks. Next slide, please. And then, of course, we also provide all the databases. So we determine what, of course, we are, we're, we are very grateful for the the GALE databases that the state library provides for us. In addition, we, we purchase other databases as well that provide accessibility, that have the accessibility options, such as the GALE databases translate information into other languages for our English language learners. We, the databases provide just a number of universal design for learning principles such as audio options. We can change the font to open dyslexic, et cetera. Next slide, please. We also are the ones who usually provide computer science education in the school library. We teach students how to code, for example. And we provide the resources to learn to do so. Next slide, please. And this is an example, this was my school library. I taught students how to use a robotic arm and we how to program robotics. So these were digital flowers that students created. They, they danced. Next slide, please. Okay, so there is, there is a statewide teacher shortage and school librarians are on that list from the Agency of Education, 2223. We are a statewide teacher shortage. So there is a statewide shortage of PK through 12 school librarians. The current class that I'm teaching right now this semester, EDLI 376, is filled over the recommended class enrollment number for this particular graduate program. Okay, next slide, please. So what is the main goal of the UVM School Library Studies Sequence? Well, it's to prepare candidates for service and leadership as school librarians serving PK through 12 students. This is the only school library educator program in Vermont. And I provided some resources that people can dig into there on that link. Next slide, please. So this is a, an overview of the UVM School Library Studies Sequence. We currently offer six graduate courses. They are to be taken or should be taken in order as presented on this slide. However, due to the state school librarian shortage and the need for school librarians, you know, they're being hired and they don't have their, they don't have the qualification, the licensure yet. We need to, currently, we're, we're having to take students in out of sequence into the classes, which is not as easy, of course. But they need to get through. They have two years only that they are allowed on a provisional license. So there's really currently no other option than to, you know, take them in out of sequence, which is, you know, difficult for the student for certain. So it is a graduate degree. It's this licensure is, the six courses is embedded within the Master of Education and Curriculum and Instruction. And the concentration is in Library Media Studies. So the courses are six courses at three credits each. That's 18 total credit hours of graduate study in Library Science, Media Studies. And the other 12 credits, total of 30, are from the Master of Education Program. With essential skills, you need to be an educator. Our classes also deeply embed teaching and learning principles. And as we are embedded within the Master of Education and Curriculum and Instruction. Uh, next slide, please. So this gives you an overview. I won't read it, but, but it, it tells you what each course covers. So we have, I'll just read the title of the course. So we have managing and leading school library media ship, a media centers, that is intended to be the first course. And then the next course in the sequence would be developing, developing and organizing school library media center collections. The third would be information technologies for school library media centers. Next slide, please. The fourth is information sources and services for school library media centers. That's what I'm teaching currently. The next one is designing learning in school library media centers. And the last course in the sequence is children's and young adult literature. Next slide, please. So in addition to the courses, candidates in the program have other opportunities as well that's embedded within the coursework. So they have field experiences, practicum experiences, leadership, service opportunities, professional organization and networks they participate in, and they have research opportunities as well. All right, next slide, please. So the program does address the philosophy, principles, and ethics of the field through five standards. And these are the standards. Number one is the learner and learning. And these are American Library Association and the American Association of School Librarians and the CAPE School Librarian Preparation Standards of 2019. So they are developed, all the courses are developed and standards-based. So again, standard number one is the learner and learning. And this is what it covers, learner development, diversity, differences, and environments. Next slide, please. Standard two is planning for instruction, which includes instructional strategies, integrating ethical use of information and instructional practice, and assessment, of course. And next slide, please. Standard three is knowledge and application of content, which, in, which covers reading engagement, information literacy, which is super important, technology-enabled learning. Next slide, please. Standard four is organization and access. It covers information resources and evidence-based decision-making. Next slide, please. Standard five is leadership advocacy and professional responsibility, which covers professional learning, leadership and collaboration, advocacy, and ethical practice. Next slide, please. So I'm not gonna, these are just in there so you can take a deep look, but, a deeper look. But each course does. But each course does, as listed here, you can see which course covers the particular standards. So, next slide, please. I'm not gonna go, you know, read through all that, but it gives you an idea of how the courses cover the different standards. Next slide, please. All right. These are, these are actually the Vermont Core Teaching Standards. It's a crosswalk with UVM EDLI coursework. So, so those are the Vermont Core Teaching Standards. So, we have to, our, our courses are developed on various standards. So, like I mentioned previously, Vermont's Core Teaching Standards, the American Association of School Librarians Standards, ALA and CAPE. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, these are instructional strategies, leadership and collaboration. Yep. Next slide, please. So, the school, the UVM School Library Media Studies Sequence also supports the EQS. So, the, which, which is the Education Quality Standards. So, according to the Educational Quality Standards, for, for every 300 students, there should be at least one full-time library media specialist. We have a shortage. Like I said, a lot of libraries are just running on one school librarian or, or we have, or people have been hired and they don't have, like I mentioned earlier, they don't have the certification yet or the, you know, the educational requirements. So, that's why we're having to take students, you know, letting them jump in out of, out of sequence, course sequence. So, it's a pretty dire situation right now as far as staffing for school librarians. Next slide, please. But what we do cover under the EQS, this is our section really for the school librarians. We are included in this section under the Educational Quality Standards, access to instructional materials. So, right now, currently, they are being updated, Act One. There's an Act One update, which has not gone through yet, but this section has actually been updated to include more specifics about the materials we should be providing as school librarians for our students to create accessibility and, you know, and, you know, and that we're supposed to teach information literacy and, and have, we're supposed to supply all the digital, the print and digital resources and technology necessary for students to access learning. So, this is really important. This is where school librarians are in the EQS. And like I said, they're being updated right now to include even more responsibilities for the school librarian within the schools. Next slide, please. Yep. So, upon completion, you, the, students receive their licensure and they have the opportunity to continue on from the six courses in our program. They can continue on and they need to declare that they would like to actually pursue the Master of Education, which is an excellent opportunity for more classes than they have their Master of Education. And I list here the procedures, the process of how they can do that. There's transcript review, et cetera. Next slide, please. So, these are the requests. So, as noted on Slide 15, according to the Agency of Education, we, there is, school librarians are impacted, there is a statewide shortage of PK through 12 library media specialists. Oh, by the way, we are licensed certified as pre-K through 12 school librarian media specialists. As I mentioned too, my class currently is, is filled way over the recommended enrollment amount. We have students, I have students, potential students contacting me almost on a daily basis about how they can take the classes and, and at the graduate level and become, to become certified. There's a real desire to become school librarians. We believe we must expand our program immediately to accommodate these needs. And so, we're asking for the following, please, to support this dire need. Double the amount of courses offered by ensuring that a new cohort of students can start School Library Studies Sequence each year versus every other year. Right now, it starts every other year. This means, the consequences would be that we would offer two courses simultaneously each semester to ensure that students can move through the courses sequentially, as I mentioned, because they are built upon each other. And this would, we, we have always worked within this cohort means so that students really get to know each other well and they can support each other. And, and this support, it's, working in a cohort, it lasts for years. The students, people I train with, we still reach out to each other, we support each other. So, I mean, this is, this is a really important piece of the program to stay in that cohort. Next slide, please. And another request we have, please, is we, we are, we are talking about adding a Master of Library and Information Science Studies/Master of Eds, so in dual option, such as Kent State University in Ohio, they offer an MD/MLIS dual degree program, which leads to a multi-age initial licensure in school library media. But, but the thing is with this, this program prepares students to work in all types of libraries, including school libraries. So, currently, we do not have a graduate program for public libraries, for example, public librarians. So, this offering would cover both public and, well, academic as well and school librarians, this dual option. Number three, we would like to offer additional professional development courses, which would run simultaneously in addition to the two core classes that would run if we opened it up to, you know, a cohort starting each year. Such courses would enable school librarians to teach courses such as information and media literacy, or creating cultures of thinking and diverse perspectives, DEI in teaching, place-based, community-based, teaching and learning, SEL and reading literature, grant writing, and the school librarian, supporting English language learners in our schools. So, those are different ideas we have that we would like to offer for our school librarians as professional development, which we currently do not offer for them through the UVM program. Next slide, please.
I just wanted to, I wanted to jump in because we have just about eight minutes left of the time that we have with you this morning. So, I want to be sure to give the working group members time to ask questions and follow-up on some of what you've shared with us.
Okay, this is the last slide.
Okay, great.
Yep. So, number four, money to support professional development for the school librarians lectures. We, we would ask, we have a need, please. Number five, purchase of sets of required books. That's been an issue to create access for our students. Perhaps, you know, these sets of textbooks could be purchased and then loaned. And audio versions of text, and that would be an ask from ABLE, the ABLE library. We have students, again, who need, it's to create accessibility for all, especially for texts that do not have an audio or eBook version. Thank you very much. That, that, that is, that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Really appreciate your, your coming to share with us today. And I want to open it up to the committee, I'm sorry, to the working group for, for questions. Susan.
Hi. I'm wondering who these requests are being made to? Is this something that is being requested to UVM? Is this something that, that has been discussed within, within UVM itself? Or is this something that is, was this created specifically for us? Or has it, has it gone out to other people as well?
Right. This, this was created specifically for you. It has not yet been discussed with UVM, but however, these are needs. I opened it up to lectures who are currently teaching within the sequence and these are needs they see. So, these are our needs that we see immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome. Meg Allison.
Hi, Deb. Thank you for that amazing presentation, very thorough. I feel like I wear a unique hat because I am a graduate of the Library Media Sequence Program under provisional license, got the Masters in Education and became a lecturer and taught three classes in the sequence as well. And a couple just follow-up questions. So, I'm excited to hear that there could be a Masters of Library Science available through UVM. Would that be ALA accredited so that the license would transfer to other states?
Well, as, as I mentioned, I, we have not brought this up with UVM yet. And it would depend upon, it would depend upon the, well, first, it depends upon UVM and what type of certifications they would want us to, to have. As far, my understanding is that we would have to have the CAPE certification as well, which not all schools want to go through. I, I don't have that knowledge, you know, if, I don't, I don't know what UVM would want to have for certifications at this moment. But these are ideas that we would, you know, that would, that we think would help our, our program, school librarians, especially with the shortage, and also public librarians as well.
No, I agree. I mean, certainly, in the courses I taught, we always went over, you know, it was upwards of two dozen adult learners. Couple thoughts too. So, yeah, I think a conversation with UVM would be great because, you know, they are profiting mightily from the revenue that they're getting from the tuitions. And I agree that we should double, you know, the amount of, of lectures because they're typically, I don't know if the committee knows this, you know, full-time school library media specialists. And so, they're, they're teaching in addition to their day job. And ultimately, for me, it became unsustainable. I couldn't keep up with teaching a grad school course and a full-time job. So, it would be interesting for UVM to see if they, you know, if it became accredited, if they could hire faculty, you know, full-time. And, no, I think that was it, Deb. If I, I had, I took a lot of notes, it was a great presentation, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Are there other members of the working group who have questions or comments? I just, oh, Jeanette.
Hi, Deb. That was a great presentation. And maybe I just missed it, but what percentage of your courses are available online?
The, oh, I, you know what? Actually, I didn't mention that. That's important. It, well, no, it is in there, it's in the presentation, but, but I didn't mention it specifically. So, they are all online. However, we do have, and it depends upon the lecture, but usually four sessions, we have virtual, virtually, we meet together for about three hours. So, we meet about 12 hours total virtually and work together in groups online.
Okay, great. And that has been a, as a result of COVID or?
So, we-
Is that a permanent decision to go online so folks aren't having to, you know, go back and forth to Burlington?
Right. So, no, they have been online for years. Gosh, at least since 2012. Mike, Meg might know how long. But, but they were hybrid in the sense that we would, these four virtual meetings, we've been doing, well, we did virtual meetings before too. So, but we did meet like maybe once or twice during the semester in person until COVID. So, maybe two of the four virtual meetings, so-called virtual hybrid meetings, would be in person. Now, all four are. But we did have virtual meetings before as well, like, like I said, half maybe were virtual. So, and I can't remember what, Meg might remember what they were called. We would have them in specific locations. Do you remember what that was called?
I, you know, I loved that model and I don't remember what it was called, but we met like at the Waterbury, you know, like the public access places provided by the state, like different satellites. And there was one in Linden mill, there was one in, all parts of the state.
Bennington, yeah.
And you could meet in person with people from your cohort and get the lessons via, like, video stream from the instructor.
Right. And, and, but yet, we were together with everybody, yeah, at the same time. Yeah, that was before, yeah, that was, yeah. So, it's been, it's been kind of online, yeah, for, for years. Yeah.
Thank you. It is 10:30 now. Susan O'Connell has her hand up, but if I don't keep on track with our timing, we won't, we'll be off for the next guest to come. Susan, do you have a quick question that Deb could answer?
I was, I was just interested in whether there was any discussion of undergraduate-level classes in library media science or in library studies at all?
Oh, no, that, we, no, because, no, but that, I mean, that's, that's a great question because as a teacher, we, we need to have the masters, you know, the graduate courses. But, I mean, that's, that would be a great way to bring people into the program to decide, you know, do I want the public or do I want to teach? You know? I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Well, people going through their undergraduate degree could also be taking library classes and graduate with a bachelor's degree. And also with the certification available for them to become a school library media specialist. It's, it's something that some other states do and it's something I'd love to see us pursue, perhaps not the highest priority, but something for us to be thinking about.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to just thank you again, Deb, for being with us today and for sharing so much information about the program that's provided in School Media Specialists by UVM. And you're welcome to stay on for other elements of the, the meeting. We're moving into Agenda Item Six, which is Public Comment. And I believe I see that Cassie Willner is here. Cassie is the Children's Literacy Foundation Program Manager. Some of us know that program by the name of CLIF. And I want to welcome Cassie to share, oh, there she is, to share about 10 minutes of comment. And then, the working group will ask questions in the, in the five minutes. And we're getting started a little bit late, so you're, I would say, go with your presentation until around 10:42. Thank you.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Cassie Willner and I'm the Program Manager at the Children's Literacy Foundation, also known as CLIF. And some of you may have known my predecessor, Meredith Scott, who was in this role for many years. And I did not make a presentation in the sense of slides or anything like that. And Catherine or, or anyone else, if you want to advise about the testimony, I'm, I'm not gonna read my written testimony word for word, but I'm just gonna reference this document.
That's fine. And, and the last guest that you saw was a, a full presenter on, on the program, so that's why she had the slides. Don't feel, you, you are doing everything right by just showing up and, and sharing from us and high level of what you wrote in your statement is, is fine. And you can add to it as well. It doesn't have to match exactly.
Great. So, I've been in this role for a couple of months now and, so I'm still pretty fresh in getting to know not only, not only the role, the role that I play as a literacy program manager, but also getting to know our community and our networks and our grantees. So just a little bit about CLIF, our mission is to inspire a love of reading and writing among children across Vermont and New Hampshire. We target ages zero to 12. And we're really hyper focused on under resourced and underserved communities. So this might be rural communities, schools with higher free reduced lunch rates, schools that have higher literacy assessments where they go score below proficiency levels. And we work with all sorts of partners, including public libraries, public schools, correctional facilities, out of school time programs, summer programs, affordable housing developments, parent child family centers, other social service agencies. But really, I would say that for the grants I manage are mainstay, like long term partners over the 25 years that CLIF has been in existence are public libraries and librarians and also our public schools, where we also partner closely with the librarians and literacy coaches in the schools. So just to summarize, like, we love, love, love librarians. And the work that you do and are really invested in supporting libraries and librarians who are under resourced or working in with small budgets and small communities and helping them get new books, add to their collections, diversify their collections and basically increase a love of reading and writing for kids. So I think I have a really fun job and I get to sometimes be a book fairy. Yesterday I got to go to Hardwick Public Library, they're a rural library grantee this year, and deliver some new books for them. And it was really fun to connect with Marilyn, the children's librarian there, so if you may know. So how, so what's the link with the workforce development and continuing education? Something I talk about in the written testimony is capacity, which I'm I'm sure is just comes up everywhere in your working group. And that is, you know, for us, I think it's really looking at the capacity of the librarian to write grants for CLIF, which is namely our Rural Libraries Grant that we offer every year. But we also have a summer readers grant and a community based grant. So if the librarian or library trustees or volunteers aren't in the loop with CLIF programming or if they don't have the capacity to write grants, if they're feel overwhelmed, then that's going to be a hurdle for them. So it's kind of like this twofold, how do we get the word out to libraries and librarians? And then do they even have the capacity to write the grant, which we intentionally make easy to to write and to submit? So I just want to acknowledge that right up front is as a potential hurdle. The other thing, sorry, I'm just hearing my husband coming home, so I'm going to move my computer. The other thing that I want to mention is the, so the professional development really are are two key professional development opportunities that are open to all librarians in Vermont and New Hampshire. And they're free. Both of these is the Community Literacy Conference and then the Biannual Rural Library Conference. So these two are conferences that have been held for many years and that I'm really excited as part of my role that I'll get to develop and implement. So the Community Literacy Conference is held usually in March, maybe early April every year. And this is really open to all CLIF grantees, partners, including librarians, teachers, school staff, out of school time program providers, early educators, et cetera. And this offers four and a half hours of training and professional development. It was previously held, I believe, at Lake Maury in person. And since the pandemic, the last two years, it's been held virtual. And that has been very, very successful and we will continue to do it that way. Again, this is free, very easy form to fill out, to register. People who show up and identify themselves in the chat during the workshops gets get sent bundles of books because we have lots of books to give away at CLIF. And it was last year, they did it three Wednesdays in a row in March. And it started after the school hours. I think it was like, you know, like three to 4:30, something like that, with three different presenters on three different days. And people responded really well to that schedule, so I think we'll just follow that same schedule this year. And then the Biannual Rural Library Conference, this has also been held virtually. And we've seen a lot of success with that in terms of being able to reach new people and allow people from all different parts of Vermont and New Hampshire be able to attend. Some, and this has been held in the, I think, in the fall, early November. So it it will, we skipped this year, so it will be November 2023. And we'll have that conference. And that's really specifically focused on our small rural libraries. Three online workshops with an hour and a half each workshop. And then integrated within, for both of these conferences is within the time is, you know, the ability to do breakout groups and learn from each other and have small group discussions in the virtual format. And again, anyone who logged in and identified themselves in the chat received a bundle of new books for them either to keep for their collections or give away. For our next conference, we have some feedback and themes that are percolating for professional development. I'm curious, have come up for you all in your discussions? They want, some of the topics are reaching homeschool population, SEL, mental health, first aid, school librarians, you know, whether the resignations or just schools that don't have school librarians at all, how to connect with them, how to connect with the early childhood, zero to five. Family and community engagement is a big one, a really big topic. Blogs, technology, and then outreach and advertising. And I think looped in with the family engagement is how do you connect with families that don't normally come to the library? And how do you get them, get them to visit, get their children to visit and families? And then one last thing I wanted to mention is that we have literacy programs and ideas on our website that are always up and always available to all. So I'm just cognizant of our time, it's 10:41. I think I'll wrap up here with that and just say, you know, building community is really important to us. And we rely a lot on our community to get the word out and network about our grants. So I, I just can't stress enough how important libraries and librarians are to our, you know, to Vermont in general and then to our CLIF world. They're just, yeah, essential to our work. And we're proud to support you all in your work. So thanks for listening, let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Cassie. I really appreciate the the work that CLIF does. And I know that there are so many libraries in Vermont that have benefited from partnering with you over the years and receiving grant funds and attention and support. Or, I'm sorry, working group members, do you have questions for Cassie?
Well, I.
I'm usually so quiet.
It's all good. I just want to let you all know too, our next Rural Libraries Grant will open in that grant site. This is for the 2023 through 24 school year, but that will open in kind of like early winter, either December or January. So if you know libraries, they are librarians who would be a great fit for that, pass the word along.
Absolutely, and I I think we just shared some, a message out about that through our Department of Libraries email newsletter. Jeanette, I see you on camera, so I'm thinking you might have a question or comment.
No, not this time.
Well, I want to just thank you, Cassie, for for coming. You may have said this already, but just a question. How, how many libraries per year, when you're talking about the upcoming opportunity, how many libraries will be able to take advantage of that ultimately will be chosen for for that grant program?
Great question. The Rural Libraries Grant is 12 programs. We try to divide it pretty evenly among Vermont and New Hampshire with six in each state, but it it can go up or down. But then we have our, the At Risk Grant Programs, which are really, I would say, I think we need to revise that name because they're really like the community one off grants, those are each semester. So we have a spring one coming up and that's open to libraries as well. And then there's the Summer Readers. So I, that's a great question, how many libraries through all the grant programs do we serve? I don't know the answer to that, but I do, I have in my testimony and my statistic that we partnered with over 90% of the library, rural libraries in Vermont and New Hampshire with populations under 5,000, so.
Yeah, I've I've seen a spreadsheet with the the full list of the Vermont libraries that have received support from CLIF over the years. And it's over the the whole course of your program. So that is really, was really powerful to see that that continued support that you provide. And I, my sense as far as the funding for your activities is that this is all local funding and donations. Like, just for transparency, there, you don't receive a grant from the Department of Libraries and you don't apply for grants from the Department of Libraries or receive other federal funding is my impression.
Yes, yep.
So to me, the fundraising effort that you engage in is is one of the remarkable things about the CLIF program.
It's pretty remarkable. I'm amazed at that as an employee there and it's, it's also, it's sustainable and it's, it really goes to show that the people want to invest in literacy efforts in their communities, especially when they see the difference on a local level and 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 that there is money out there. We're really fortunate and that we have a sustainable model and that we can offer this, you know, that we can do these conferences for free, I think is just, just so great.
Jeanette, do you have a question?
Okay, so I'll go if nobody else has a question. Cassie, can you give us some idea of how you evaluate grant applications? Is it strictly you're going to pull one out of a hat for each area of the state? Does it go by on when the last year that community had been funded? You get my idea.
I do get your idea, Jeanette, and that, and it actually is, it's sort of this magical mix of some of those elements. And then, you know, what is the need in the community? How does the grantee make the case for that need? I think that's something we consider very, very heavily. And then we do look at geographic spread, you know, that it's not all Chittenden County or it's not all, as a Vermont based organization, we have, you know, we're really well networked in Vermont. So to try to share the love in New Hampshire. And then also, we do look, we have a lot, our grantees tend to kind of, because we have these different grant programs, whether it's the summer reading program or the, you know, the semester one. So they often will have, they repeat and pop up in different places and for different grants. So it's, it is kind of seeing who's, how, when did you last have a grant? Oh, look, this is a community who didn't, hasn't had a grant since 2005, let's get them back in. So we, it, it's, it's an interesting mix of things that we take into consideration. We have a very, I think, an evaluative, when we look at their programs in general, when we evaluate them, we have the ability to do more kind of qualitative, long form feedback from grantees. And because we don't have the state or federal funding, we don't, you know, where it's a very different ballgame. For those of you who are, you know, in like the results based accountability world and, you know, you have to, showing the impact is very different at CLIF. We tend to rely on the stories and the photos and the really the first person accounts of impact that that help us not only with our donors, but also help us revise and retool for next year when we do the grants again.
Well, thank you for for that question and for that response, Cassie, and thank you for joining us. We really appreciate hearing about this in the context of continuing education. And it's really helpful to hear the services that you provide to our youth serving librarians throughout the state and rural communities. So thank you so much. We're going to move to our next, our next public comment. We have, I believe we have Johnny Flood here from the Vermont Early Literacy Initiative or Vli. Johnny's the Literacy Programs Manager, and I think Wendy Martin is here as well. So combined, we've got your, your Vli activity. We're starting a few minutes late, so you're going to go from 10:50 to, I have to do math, hold on, 10:50 to to 11 o'clock, if you could share your your comments. And then we'll reserve five minutes for questions and then we'll move to Bree Droppa, who's also here. I noticed, stranded us already. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for letting us join you all this morning. My name is Johnny Flood, I'm the Literacy Programs Manager at Vermont Humanities. And one of the programs that I oversee and work with is Vli, the Vermont Early Literacy Initiative. And my colleague Wendy Martin is here this morning as well. And she can sort of start us off with the history of the program and where we're at with it now.
Hi, everybody, it's, oh, go ahead, sorry. Is somebody saying something? Oh, okay. Hi, everybody. As Johnny said, I am working with him in Vermont Humanities, working with Vli, which I think you all have heard a lot about, a bit about in past testimonies. So just a little bit of the history of Vli, the Vermont Early Literacy Initiatives. The original goal was to improve the cognitive content of public libraries, early literacy programming. And at the time, in 2010, that was really story hour. That's what we were talking about was story time in libraries. So no matter how big your library is or how tiny your library is, you do story time. And it's always been for the past 50 years, 70 years. It's a song, a finger play, a story, a craft, and maybe another song, even if you can't sing, right? And there's nothing wrong with that, but it was the dream of a past colleague at VidLib, the Youth Services Consultant Grace Green. It was her dream that librarians would learn just how important those story time interactions were. And when you have a group of babies, you know you have a group of parents. You're reading to the babies, but you're also talking to the parents. You're modeling the reading, you're also giving the parents tips on reading to the baby, talking to their baby, all of that. So those early trainings served as continuing education as they helped to raise the bar of what librarians were doing and allowed them to understand that they were doing really important, good work, but they just needed to do it with intentionality, which was sort of the the word we we came back to over and over again in all of the trainings. We wanted it to make it clear to their communities that how important their work was, how important the public library was, as if if they didn't know it already. And as one librarian even said in her testimony, after Vli, story time was no longer considered just entertainment, it was education. So we continued with librarians from 98 communities. So 98 libraries in Vermont were trained by Vli over the, over that decade, 2010 to 2020. And it eventually expanded to include STEM, social emotional development, visual literacy, a lot of other topics. And something that was very important to us and still remains important. It's one of the big pushes of the work that we're doing is connecting with early childhood educators in their communities. And we, we helped librarians make those connections and train them on how to train those childcare providers in doing these, these different topics that we'd introduce them to. So at first, the librarian said, we don't know how to train childcare providers. We don't, we don't teach reading, we don't do any of those things. And there was real pushback at first, until they realized that, yes, librarians are literacy experts and they have valuable knowledge and experience to offer. So Vermont Humanities is now the home of Vli. And two years ago in 2020, we began by reconnecting, restarting the program with 11 of the Vli libraries in a first cohort. And we're planning to offer trainings on big picture topics while we provide books and materials for programming. And then we all know what happened in 2020. We had that plan, but much like how libraries, librarians had to pivot in their communities, we had to as well. So as time went on, it began to make more sense to have regular personal contact with these 11 libraries rather than try to get together for those bigger in person conferences. And we asked them, what do you need? How can we, how can we help you? And that help was wide ranging and unique to each community, the kinds of programs that were popular. The kinds of programs that were popular before the pandemic may not meet, meet the needs of children and families and other community members. So what was needed in Bennington, and I think you've heard about how that community has welcomed new Americans from Afghanistan. It was not what was needed in Bradford, where one of the many things that Gail is doing in Bradford is they're the hub for meals for families, meal distribution. So, and in these places like Ennisburg Falls, the librarian had always wanted to put together bags, themed bags with books to distribute, to circulate, hadn't been able to do it. So she's doing that now and she's making more of them. There are so many other examples, but, but we found that one-size-fits-all was not the approach you could really take with these libraries. So we shifted our focus from those bigger conferences to making routine site visits. So I observed programs, delivered books, and I spoke with librarians about the challenges they face. And we, I offered advice, we offered advice to them. And some librarians, it comes from other librarians as well. They connect with each other. So we've held regular Zoom meetups where they could talk to each other in larger towns. Even in the larger towns, librarians feel isolated. And we see part of our role is being, bringing those librarians together. And in a recent meeting, two of the librarians talked about how they hadn't had an in-person story hour for many months. And they had almost forgotten how to do it, believe it or not. And one said she wasn't sure she was even doing a good job anymore, which just, you know, breaks your heart to hear somebody, you know, they're doing a good job, but to think that they think that is really hard to hear. So the others on the call, they all sort of, they all talk together about that, about that. So that we think those connections are really, really important. Johnny?
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. And, you know, we're Vermont Humanities. So as a humanities-centered organization, we're always striving to bring the humanities disciplines into communities and to use literacy learning and discussion as tools for community building as much as for education and enrichment. And we feel really very strongly that public libraries serve a vital role as community hubs, hubs that align with and help further our own mission. And we know and we've seen that Vermont librarians are working incredibly hard to meet those specific needs of their communities. So in that vein, as we sort of move forward with Vli and constantly readjust and be as dynamic as possible, we, we want a relationship with librarians to be really a partnership where we can offer our strengths as facilitators and administrators first and bring our backgrounds as subject matter experts into conversations, workshops, and trainings when it arises and is directly relevant to their work. And then to, as Wendy said, help them share their expertise with one another whenever possible. We are planning, as we move forward into the next year, to offer more formal learning opportunities, trainings, and workshops on bigger-picture topics like collection development and different DEI initiatives in their community. We're excited to introduce these, but we do feel continuing to meet the librarians where they are and in their immediate needs is really also very valuable to them professionally. So in summary, librarians all have to be dynamic and generous and nimble. It's part of the job description. And so we strive to provide librarians with the same level of support and the same kind of support as they form new community collaborations, as they welcome new audiences into the community and the library, and as they continue to grow as professionals. That's sort of it. That's our brief update over the past year and a half. And happy to take any questions.
Thank you both for the support that you give to libraries in Vermont and serving their communities. And thank you for being here today. I want to open it up to our working group members to ask questions of Johnny Flood and Wendy Martin. Where are they? Here we go. Susan, Susan O'Connell, thanks.
Hi, Wendy and Johnny. Thank you for being here. My question is really specific to Vli. I know you're talking about continuing to support librarians who've been involved in Vli in the past, which is great. Are there any plans at this point to introduce the basic Vli concepts to a new cohort of librarians? As we have so many new librarians who are joining the workforce.
Yes, is the.
Right.
Yeah, we, you know, a lot of it's about capacity and, you know, wanting to make sure that the relations, relationships we have are strong and can have a lasting impact. So we don't want to move too quickly. But we really, really do want to expand our Vli cohort numbers year by year. Partially because, yeah, we, we like introducing our Vli concepts and the work and the resources available, but also because bringing new librarians again into contact with longtime librarians and longtime Vli partners is hugely beneficial for everybody. So the short answer is yes, 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 yes. We don't know too specifically what those numbers are just yet, but absolutely.
Great. I'm delighted to hear it. Thank you.
Other questions for Wendy and Johnny? Well, we may have magically gotten back on schedule. I want to thank Johnny and Wendy for, for coming this morning and sharing about the work that you're doing and your plans for the future. It's very helpful to hear from you directly. So thank you so much. You're welcome to stay on and, and hear the upcoming folks. I see that Bree Droppa, and I hope, Bree, that I'm saying your name correctly, that Bree has joined us and we are somehow magically back on schedule. So, Bree, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for taking my testimony on this important topic. So you gotten my written testimony, so I'm not really going to read that over. I just want to highlight a couple of important things. So my name is Bree Droppa. I am the Director of the Westford Public Library in Westford, Vermont. We are a very small, solo-ish library. I do have a recent new, very part-time assistant. But I'm here today to talk about the kind of, at least in my opinion, the state of professional development in Vermont. And I do want to say that I received my Vermont Library Certification in two thousand and fifteen. So I am a graduate of the program. It was a time when classes were still being held in person in Berlin. And you really got to know the people that you were taking these core classes with. Those are the folks that I still rely on in the Vermont library landscape. I have developed that kind of bond with them. So when I have a question, I don't necessarily go to an official resource. I just go to this person, or this person, or this person. At a recent mentoring meeting that Joy Worland had for more experienced librarians who wanted to be mentors, many of my certification cohort were now the mentors. And that was really cool to see how we have grown and developed and changed in the Vermont library world. Speaking of the Vermont Library Certification, I was very pleased and a little amazed that my Vermont Library Certification came at no cost to me or to my library. I think that we think, think of all of the different certifications and classes that you have to take, and a lot of them cost money. And the fact that I was able to be a certified librarian in the state of Vermont at no cost to myself or my library, I think is just amazing. I don't think that many people would get the certification if we did have to pay for it because library budgets are so tight and so small, that professional development and CE kind of falls by the wayside. So I would encourage Vermont, the Vermont Department of Libraries to do everything it can to keep the certification program free and available to all. Now, as a solo librarian, I wear like all the hats, so I feel like I need all the classes. So I didn't stop taking classes once I got my certification. That is one fault that I think, or, you know, something I would like to see added to the CE program. I think just like teachers have to take certification or classes to keep up their certification, I would like to see some kind of continuing education requirement of the Vermont Library Certification Program. I think there's a lot of value in updating skills. I mean, I got my certificate in two thousand and fifteen. And if I never took another class, I'd be almost eight years behind the curve of what's going on in the library world. So I think most of us are lifetime learners anyway. And I wouldn't want to make it prohibitive, but I think that it would be a good idea that you have to take one or two classes or attend a workshop every once in a while, or go to a conference. And that could count towards your certification. We know that not only is it the stuff that we're learning at these classes, but also the connections and the colleagues that we meet as well. There's value in that professional networking. And I've taken a lot of classes, I said that. But I really like how the Vermont Department of Libraries brings in different experts. So people like the, the Howard Center have done the Narcan training and mental health training with them. UVM Extension School with Gary Diesel's classes on HR and all that other stuff. There's all these community partners that Vermont Department of Libraries seems to have access to. And I really like the perspectives that they bring and the professional aspects that they bring. So it's not only with the library consultants, but I really, really like when they bring people in. I'm glad to hear that Vli is still around. I deeply miss it. So I am not one of the libraries that's currently being served by the Vermont Early Literacy Initiative. So put me on your list, Johnny and Wendy. I'd love to be back to that. But as far as continuing education, one of the aspects that I think is most important about Vli is that we were trained to provide childcare providers with child, with certification and teach these childcare providers. Childcare providers have to do a lot of cert, of classes to keep up their certification. And most of those come with a fee. So being able to provide our childcare providers with free, high-quality literacy education is just a win-win for everyone. And we know that we need to keep those childcare providers because it's a real problem. There's such a shortage of them in Vermont. Besides that, there are a lot of opportunities for CE outside of the Vermont library landscape. I know I've participated in things with ALA and ARSL. And Joy is very good about sending out opportunities. So I would like to speak about one more thing. People have said, oh, you love libraries so much, why don't you go get a Master's of Library Science? Because that is something I don't have. And I have looked into it, but the fact that there's no MLIS available in the state of Vermont is a real blow to our profession. So, you know, just, I wanted to put that out there. I don't like learning online. And I think the pandemic stressed that for a lot of people. For me, it's about the tangible relationships and connections in learning. And so not being able to even try getting an MLIS in Vermont for me is a real problem. Also, the cost of programs that are available online or otherwise is prohibitive. I'm never going to recoup the investment at this point in my life. If I was to get an MLIS and spend forty thousand dollars, I am not going to make forty thousand more dollars if I get an MLIS. Maybe if I switched to a larger library in a different state, I would. But I love being a rural Vermont librarian. And so I don't think a Master's of Library Science is in my future at this point. That being said, the Vermont library landscape is full of talent. And not all of us came to the profession as librarians. We come from education. We come from social services. We come from artists, you know. Everyone you meet probably had one or two jobs before they became a librarian. And I think that it should be a top priority of Vermont, the Vermont Department of Libraries, to kind of use the talent that's here. Use the talent of the existing workforce to train each other. And I think that that would be really good magical experience. And before I conclude, because I know I have like one minute left, I would really like to compliment Joy Worland. Taking over as the consultant for CE and professional development or for this new position, I'm not sure if it was a position beforehand, she has done a fantastic job. So kudos to Joy for doing a great job and holding a variety of meetups and roundtables and trainings, not only for new librarians in the certification program, but for upper-level library workers as well. I really have noticed the depth and of classes that are being offered. I can't take everything, but I, I do like the offerings. And one thing I'll just say, it's kind of the connections that we make along the way in the learning process, not just the information that we're learning, that is the real important part of professional development. So thank you.
Thank you, Bree. I'd like to open it up for questions from the working group now. Wendy, do you have a question? Oh, Meg has a question. Let's hear hand up.
Hi, thanks, Bree. That was a great presentation. And I totally want to amplify what you said. If we could invest in our talent that's already here, we'll attract and retain Vermont librarians who are eager to learn. So I'm curious, there's, and I have a thought about that. It could be that perhaps there's a scholarship fund that's established to help Vermont public librarians or school librarians. And I think public librarians, let's put the emphasis on you in this case, in your field, to, for continuing education, possibly. But I'm curious, like, what sort of courses do you think would be good to have for someone in your situation who's already got the Vermont Public Librarian Certification? What sort of things are you seeing that you need?
Um, well, you know, I, I do think that the landscape has changed since two thousand and fifteen. So I think things that are relevant, some of that goes with technology, some of it goes with, you know, there's been a real community shift, you know. We're not just in here with our books anymore. We're out into the community. And just kind of examples of, of people who are doing that and it's going right for them and how we can do that. I think programs that like Vli need to continue and kind of branch out, I think. You know, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I just think the information gets updated. And I think that we need to be exposed to it. It is, you know, and, and I don't like, like prescripting, like you must take these classes. But I think the idea is some people get their certificate and then they stop. And in their mind, it's still two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and twelve. I mean, you see this in teaching too. I was a teacher before I became, you know, this. And you have teachers who don't change their curriculum for twenty years. And it feels old and stodgy. And so I think to prevent our profession from feeling old and stodgy, we just have to keep up with current trends. So I wish I could say, oh, we need this, this, and this. But I really do think it's that dynamic, dynamic value of our changing landscape.
Thank you, Bree. Kelly?
So, Bree, I just wanted to thank you for your testimony. And I just wanted to let you know how much I admire the work that you do. You are so creative and it's just you. You're like your own one-woman show. And you have like, you must drink espresso like all the time for the amount of energy that you have. But I was surprised when I came here from out of state and there was kind of this friction between librarians that had a degree and those that didn't have a degree. And you are one of those people that I'd always say, but look at all the stuff that Bree is doing, like, you know. She doesn't have a master's degree and she's doing all this fabulous programming. And, you know, she's doing it all by herself. Some of the most important knowledge that I've gained in the library world, I gained, you know, on the job, under fire, not when I was getting my degree. So, and I tell people when they ask me, you know, should I go back and get my masters now? And I'm just like, I can't answer that question, but that's an awful lot of money, you know. Depending on where they are in their life and stuff like that. I'm like, but that's an awful lot of money to spend on something that, you know, you can get a lot of experience on the job first. you know, you can get a lot of experience on the job first. So I think you're doing wonderful work. And, you know, you make great decisions and you should be really proud of the work that you do.
Thanks, Kelly. I'm blushing, if you can see that. But I do, I do think that it's really important to, I don't want to say to de-emphasize the degree because some people have worked really hard to get their masters and it's great. But in the profession, to recognize the strengths that we all bring from previous positions, previous work. I do have a master's, it's just not in library science. And medieval history hasn't gotten me too far in this profession, but it did before. So I do think that, I don't know, whatever the department can do to de-stigmatize in a way, you know, not having a degree. I have talked to Joy more and more about the certification and how useful it would be if we could take that to another state even, and how legitimizing it would be to know that our, the hard work that we put into certification in Vermont would transfer if we ever have to leave our beautiful state too.
I agree. And like the cataloging course that I took 20 years ago, I know that the state offers a cataloging course. And I'm sure that Lauren does a bang-up job. She is a phenomenal cataloger, so very sorry to lose her. But that's something that you typically don't learn on the job. So yeah, no, not throwing shade to master's programs at all. I'm glad I got mine. But there's a lot to be said for what you learn on the job. So thank you.
As somebody who plagued my cataloging teacher in library school, I have to say, it might be interesting to offer, you know, the idea of having kind of refreshers or having continuing education post-certification that's necessary. I had been thinking maybe technology classes when I was just sort of spinning ideas. Cataloging might be another one because standards change and practices change. Lauren, do not let me sign up because I always cataloged in my own weird but also correct way. And I was a real pain in the button class. Wendy, do you want to ask a quick question? Our final person on the schedule is Meg. And I'm taking a little bit of liberty because it seems like we've got some additional questions. And so letting Bree go a few minutes extra to get those in.
Yeah, well, I'll start by saying that I'm also a certification alum. But 2008, it was a little while ago. And I have just started to go and get my, I started in January for my MLS. And I did that because the job that I want requires an MLS. Not wants, but requires. So I've done it out of necessity rather than any other reason. And let me tell you, after working for 24 years in the libraries world, most of it's just codifying what I already understand. And then it's also giving me a bit of information on trends and tips and things like that. But most of it's just codifying what I've picked up in 24 years. But I agree fully with everything you said.
Yeah, I do think that those job requirements need to be like kind of looked at again. I mean, I've even looked at stuff way back in the Department of Libraries. And it was, you know, Masters of Library Science required. And it's kind of like, really? You know, and so I do think, Wendy, you're a trooper for going to get it.
It's all online.
Yeah, I think that that's one benefit of living now and graduating from school now that programs are online. So you can look for an affordable program. And they're often a little bit longer in duration that you're able to take them than 20. How long has it been? 23 or 24 years ago when I got my degree and it was all in-person? And you're right there. I just want to thank you, Bree, for the great work you're doing and for coming today and for answering the call for comments on this important topic. I really appreciate your participation and your good thoughts on this. And appreciate your availability to be here and talk with us. I'm gonna ask Meg Allison. Meg, you had mentioned you might be able to share some comments from the school library community, some perspective for our team from the librarians themselves. So that would be really helpful if you can take some time to do that. Maybe 10 minutes is about 11:30. And then we'll do five minutes for questions unless people have 1,000 questions. But we have an extra-long recess today. So I think, I hope everybody's okay with that plan.
Great, thanks, Kathy. I'll be, I shouldn't be that long. I don't have a formal presentation prepared. But hi, my name is Meg Allison. I'm on the Library Working Committee. And I'm also a practicing school librarian at U32 Middle and High School. So when I think about professional development, it goes hand-in-hand with the work that school librarians do because we need to be relicensed. So just like Bree was saying, it would be great to have relicensorship requirements for public librarians, you know, because things change so quickly. Of course, you know, school librarians are licensed Vermont educators. And therefore, just like content-level teachers or classroom teachers, we are under the same requirements for relicensorship, just like they are. So, you know, for a Level 1 teaching license, which a new teacher would have for three years, they get 45 credits. They need to provide 45 credit hours. And to bump up to Level 2, which is a five-year license, you need to have, I think it's 90 credit courses. And we go through a whole course of doing that. It's called ALICE. It's kind of a, it's the Agency of Education. I won't make any comments about the process. Okay, so, you know, how do school librarians get their PD? We get it through conferences, coursework, workshops. Deb Eller Hansen did an amazing job presenting about the Library Media Sequence Program. And those are for librarians getting their licensure. And I think in the past, there might have been one or two courses for already-licensed school librarians to take there. I think Deb also worked on the Vermont Mentoring Matters course. That was a three-credit course that practicing school librarians could take for three credits and then sign up and be mentors for new librarians. They'd be paired, ideally someone in their geographical range or in their district. So more opportunities like that would be great to be able to do it right in-state. But otherwise, we don't have any, in terms of coursework, things geared specifically to school librarians. But of course, you can make a lot of courses work under your licensure as long as it fits one of the teaching standards or the core standards within school librarianship. For example, I took a course with Alex Chevren-Vinay on trauma-informed equitable teaching practices. And my action study was based on research around trauma transformed and informed school libraries. So a lot of school librarians can take coursework broadly for educators and, you know, based on our projects or our field of study, make it work for school librarians. So that's really awesome. But I do want to say it's very inequitable how school librarians fund their own professional development. And it varies widely. And I'm often surprised when I hear of the disparity between teachers. It's all teaching librarians and teachers in general because it's all based on your contract that you have with your school district. So some school districts, such as mine, reimburse educators up to the equivalency of six credits at UVM per year. So there's a dollar amount to what six credits that UVM would cost. And with approval, you know, educators can take coursework, conferences, workshops up to that dollar amount, you know, based on it being approved. So I know that there's other districts in the state where that's not the case. Or because of the pandemic, that's been frozen. I believe that's the case in the district I live in, which involves Harwood High School. And I have colleagues that work in the district, still friends that still work in the district. And their professional development money had been frozen during the first year or two of the pandemic. And so that might be a trend elsewhere in the state. So school librarians and other teachers weren't able to use district funds for their relicensorship workshops, conferences, that sort of thing. So it is an inequity. But I would say, in terms of conferences, I have colleagues right now in the school librarian world who are down at Vermont Fest at Killington. That's a partnership that Visla and Vital Learn share. Or maybe, actually, let me correct myself. Vermont Fest is sponsored by Vital Learn, which is the Vermont Information Technology Association, so educational technology professionals. And it's a two-day conference with topics relevant to school librarians, educational technologists, as well as classroom and content-level teachers of integrating educational technology into their teaching. So that's happening now. And then in the spring, what's really exciting is there's a new partnership between Visla and VLA for a new conference that's going to be in early April. I think it's like April 5th or 6th. Don't quote me. I know it's that first week. Donna Sullivan McDonald is representative from Visla, serving on that. And so that this year is going to replace our annual Dynamic Landscapes that we would host, co-host with Vital Learn every May at Schimplin College. So there is an exciting conference happening for professional development credits for both public and school librarians. And put our heads together and think about that. But yeah, besides that, I mean, school librarians can take advantage of professional learning opportunities within their own districts by joining PLCs or professional learning communities, district teams around curriculum development or leadership. And as long as, you know, everything gets recorded in ALICE, you know, you can up for relicensor for that. But, you know, so many librarians, and we just have, there's so many opportunities if you look for them, online, in-person, conferences. But again, I just want to emphasize the inequities across the districts in terms of like who funds that, the school librarians. So I think that's all I have prepared to say. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Meg. I'm gonna do a mute all and then, or maybe, it's strange. Now it stopped. There was a funny scratchy noise. It was like the ghost in the machine was writing its diary. But I don't know, you weren't writing, Meg, so it was a very funny. It might have been you. It was weird. You don't have a pet nearby, do you? I was, I was like, who should I mute? And I think we're good now. But let's have the questions from folks about the, about the comments that you shared. Christopher?
I feel like this is my theme for the day around equity and how do people get compensated for doing this work? And it's just coming up for me over and over and over again. I don't really have a question for you so much, Meg, as to flag that as a big issue that it seems to vary so much across districts. But also, you know, that people can't actually afford to do the professional development work that they need to do to get a certification that would get them a better job. So, you know, it certainly came up with Bree as well. And, you know, the idea that we are writing job descriptions that require degree-level work or graduate-level work, but then not paying salaries that are high enough to support that investment seems deeply problematic. And I know that system, you know, it's systemic across the whole country. But it seems important to flag that. Certainly happens in our early educators' work as well, right? Where people are required to do this professional development work, which costs money and time. And yet the compensation does not return that investment.
And with school media specialists, there's the dual-degree situation, right? So needing a teaching credential in addition to the MLS degree? Or do you not need the teaching credential in Vermont?
In Vermont, you need the endorsement, the school library, school library media endorsement, which is 18 credit hours. If you're not, if you have a BA or BS and you're not already a licensed educator, you have to take additional coursework, you know, in child and youth development and, you know, classroom management. But you don't need a teaching degree separate from the master, the library media endorsement.
This is so interesting to me because my own career path was that I thought I would be a school librarian. And I enrolled after getting a philosophy degree, which was not useful for being a school librarian, except that I like libraries. I enrolled in a program at Rutgers in school media. And so I have the Rutgers, the old Rutgers School Media Certification. And if I wanted to be a practicing school librarian, what I found upon graduating after paying all of that money and really taking out loans for that, was that I needed a teaching credential. And in some states, you need both the teaching credential and the masters. And I now I'm seeing that Rutgers, they've changed their program so that if you don't have, I don't even think that they would let you in if you didn't have the teaching credential. It's a very, it's like the emergency certification round. Everything was getting very muddy. So every time that I would try to get a job, I could have had it for like a year or two. But then I would have been still needing to go back and get a second degree. So part of the challenge, I think, with school media specialists is that it's really state-to-state. There is really a difference in, across states in similar regions. Every state has a different credential that's needed to do the work. Some require the teaching certification. I think I just assumed that Vermont did, so it's interesting that it didn't. It could be my backup plan if the state librarian gig doesn't work out. Maybe they'll accept my old Rutgers School Media credential.
I always want to, Kathy, to follow up, that we do have a transcript review process through the AOE. So you could get it that way. And you must have taught or learned from Joyce Valenza?
Yeah.
Lucky you.
Christopher?
Sorry, muted. Just a final comment. One of the issues here, right, is our love of local control in that every teacher's contract is negotiated with the school board at the local level rather than having consistent standards across the board. I would imagine that's true for the public libraries as well.
Yeah, the requirement of the master's or the Vermont Certificate of Librarianship, that's all made at the local level when making the requirement. And there are some school, there are some, there's at least one public library that hires someone who's got the, the school media credential because their public library serves as their school library, but it's not in the same building. So that is an interesting, there are a couple of situations like that where they don't have enough students to have the requirement for the school media specialist, which is also something kind of fascinating in Vermont. If you have a very small school, you, you don't need to meet the requirement that the larger schools need to meet.
Is that Canaan?
I don't think it's Canaan because it was somebody, someone contacted us for support in sussing out what the current, they had a recent vacancy since I've been here and Canaan hasn't had that. But yesterday, Tom and I were out in Lunenburg, which if, I look a little tired to you. That could be why, because we drove, each of us drove back from Lunenburg in a snowstorm last night. So I'm just a little frazzled. But in their town, I think they said that the elementary school has 50 kids. And that they may have, it sounds like they have a small library collection, but they don't have the requirement in a town of that, in a school of that size for the school media specialist. And that corresponds with what I've noticed about the number breakouts. Meg?
Yeah, I just, I'd want to follow up on that because there are educational quality standards. And so anything under 300 students is prorated. There should be a certified school library media specialist. So in the case of like Lunenburg, you know, maybe one day a week. Now, of course, it's hard to hire out if you have someone piecing together a full-time job, but...
And now I feel badly because I may be getting it wrong for Lunenburg. But that, I know a person whose child goes to a school with no school media specialist in central Vermont. They have no library hours at all.
Susan? They're a public, a public school library?
Yeah. Susan? Susan, do you want to unmute?
Sorry about that. I was so fired up about what I had to say. I forgot. I think there are school districts who make the claim that they are not required to have a school library media specialist at any level, but there's nothing to back up that claim.
But there's also nobody saying their school isn't accredited. This is fascinating.
Sometimes they get caught. I, in my history, working in school, in small school libraries, there have been schools that, that have made that claim for years and then have gotten caught and have had to, to rectify that. But, but they didn't get caught for many years. So why is that? Why is that not something that's, that's checked regularly? I think it's outrageous.
Well, this might be when we get to the discussion of things. It sounds like even among our members here of the working group, we have a lot of different a lot of different things we've heard, but it could be good for the working group to have one of our members or two of, a couple of our members look into this further and to to share back some information. I see Deb is still here, so I'm gonna call on her because she's got her hand up and she may know something about this.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, it is not enforced, to my knowledge. There are, there are several schools that, that don't have school librarians or yeah, so it's, it's, it's not enforced, I don't believe. That would be something I would recommend if we could check into. That would be great. Why, you know, it's in the education quality standards. Why is it not being enforced? Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Christopher, did you have a new question or comment?
I didn't. Sorry. I'll take my hand down.
No worries. Sometimes I think to put people's hands down when they start talking so that I don't get confused. And sometimes I just don't think to do that. Well, it is now 11:36, and I think we're all ready for a break. We will take a recess now until 1:00 PM. And when we come back, Jeanette Schaefer is gonna share with us about the Department of Libraries' LSTA five-year plan. That has a lot of components that relate directly to continuing education and the department, and the department's work in those areas. So it seemed like a good time to introduce that to you all as a document that the working group can, can look at, and there's some research that went into it and some demographic information and needs assessment that went into it. So we'll come back at 1 o'clock, and from 1:00 to 1:30, we'll discuss that. Then we'll have a discussion broadly of the topic of continuing education. So keep track of your thoughts on things that you heard today that you think we might want to make recommendations around. And then at the end of the day, we'll have a conversation about future meeting topics and about dates. One date in particular, because I have a personal conflict. So, but let's go now for our, our recess. Thank you all for your time this morning, and we'll see you at 1 o'clock.